Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Regular city meeting Tuesday, April 16, 2024, 6:00 PM. Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Rizano?
Here.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg? Mayor Sandu?
Here. Please join me in silent prayer and flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number A4. Madam Clerk, may I have a replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, April 19 at 9:00 AM and Saturday, April 20 at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
Thank you. Next, and item B, council agenda approval, addition and deletion any. If it's none, then I'm going to move to next and item C, presentation. Presentation one is, I think that recipient is a little bit late, so I'm going to move to presentation number two, if council is okay.
Oh, okay.
You're having a little bit late, so we can do this. Presentation two, subject Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Foundation Annual Remembrance Ceremony Proclamation. Thank you. This proclamation by the City of Galt, California, Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Foundation Annual Remembrance Ceremony. Whereas, in 1849, honorable men and women began serving as Sacramento Police Officers and Sheriff, deputies to serve and protect the city and county of Sacramento. And whereas, in 1992, the Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Foundation was formed to perpetually honor Sacramento Police Officer and Sheriff deputies who have been killed or died in line of duty. And whereas, Woodlake Park was selected as the location to construct the memorial. And in 2002, the foundation began hosting an annual remembrance ceremony to honor the past fallen officers and ceremoniously enroll any new fallen Sacramento Officer or deputies onto the memorial in a law enforcement tribute. And whereas, in 2019, the foundation launched its annual survivor luncheon to bring together the families and immediate survivors at their casual social event, which hosted family members and significantly affected coworkers, new and old, and growing in attendance each year. And whereas, the foundation with its mission to remember our fallen will continue to seek opportunity to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in serving the citizens of Sacramento. Whereas, the foundation is grateful to the many community trade unions and public safety partners, including well-known Sacramento area concrete design firm Clark Pacific, who have supported its mission and make its program possible with their signature law enforcement memorial structure. And whereas, on May 2, 2024, the foundation will hold the 22nd Outdoor Annual Remembrance Ceremony and Private Survivor Luncheon on April 28. And whereas, the foundation has honored 44 officers on their end of watch roster, including... Then I'm going to the name. Sheriff Joseph McKinney, George Chapman, Joseph Scott, Charlie Winslow, Police Chief Oskan Fish, Frank Longis-Hossen, Charlie Oggle, Frank Mello, Francis Reyes Ray, William Littlejohn, Roger Bowman, Arnold Gamble, Eugene McKnight, Kenneth Royal, Bernard Bennett, Andrew Collins, Bruce Berhoven, Dol Popovich, Rodney Butts, Stuart Baird, Christopher Boone, Eugene Luther, William Warner, Grant Wilson, David Miller, Richard DeFener, Michael Gottel, Emily Mojeffroth, Sandy Larson, Belbin Jr., Kevin Blount, Joseph Kievernajl, Jeffrey Mitchell, Wu Nguyen, Paul Tiron, Lawrence Kenfield, Kevin On, Danny Oliver, Robert French, Mark Stysak, Tara O'Sullivan, Adam Gibson, Herminder Garrawal, Ty Lenhan. All these 40, they gave their life while they was in a duty. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of Galt, California, is honored to join in remembrance of our fallen officer who so bravely served our community. Thank you. Now, I would like to ask from Chief or anybody, when I come to the podium, when I say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, if we can have Paul Brown and the members of the board come forward, and then if the Graywall and Ton family want to come up and say a few words. And then after, we can take a picture, maybe with Matt from the paper's help. Thank you. So we'll have the Ton family would like to say a couple of words briefly. You don't have to yell.
I don't have to yell, okay. Hi, I'm Will Ton, this is my wife, Mary Ann. Our son was a Galt Police Officer, Kevin Ton. He died in the line of duty, January 15, 2013. And on behalf of our family, our daughter who couldn't be here, I'd like to thank the foundation, Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial Foundation for honoring all the fallen officers, remembering them. And it shows to the families, surviving families and officers that are serving when a tragic event like this happens, that they are not forgotten and they have a family. We call it the Blue Family. And I want to thank the City of Galt and the council for this opportunity and the proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, the Graywall family will pass, but Mr. Brown, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, Galt Council, and those in attendance here at the meeting. I'm Paul Brown, President of the Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Foundation. I come here by way of being a Sacramento Police Officer for 30 years, retired, and now currently serving actively at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. But one of the biggest honors is having served on the Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Board, I believe about 25 years now. This might show some of that. As president currently. And anybody who's been in charge of an organization knows, one person gets to speak up at the microphone, but it really takes a village. And that village, in my case, is the Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Board. I've got 16 board members. Two of them are present here, Roman Marietta and Lieutenant Rick Small. We have others, and we have many liaisons that assist. It's a full-time effort of paying tribute to the fallen officers in the Sacramento area. And as you mentioned, it was since 1849, a little bit before Galt's time. But the greater Sacramento area recognizing all of the officers served in this greater region. And the foundation likes to pay tribute to their names and their legends, as well as the families. And we do that on an annual basis. You probably have heard in the law enforcement community, the slogan of never forget. And we like to emphasize that. The families will never forget. It's like yesterday. But we also have fellow officers that may have worked with their partners who have fallen. And I make mention of Chief and Lieutenant Roman Marietta. One of my board members is a former retired police captain, Sacramento Police Department. Like I mentioned, I'm with Sacramento Police Department. And we have a council member, is a sworn member. So we understand the family and the blue line and recognizing that we try to support both the families and the law enforcement agencies that suffer a loss. So on behalf of all that, and long-winded, thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing this. The start of 10 days from now will be a very heavy period of time when you'll see officers wear the black band on their badges that represents a fallen member in the family. That is how we remember that. So again, thank you, Mayor, for this resolution, and also Chief. Thank you for your efforts here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody to come in this. We all know, when we mention anything memorial, how heavy-hearted we are. So now I would like to ask any council member, want to join on the downed far picture? So when they give a proclamation, if everybody comes up. Thank you. That the other presentation regarding Hillary Crown over. If she's in the audience, can you come to the podium, please? This presentation to Hillary Crowns over because she did a selfless service to another citizen to save their life. This is certificate of recognition. We hereby present Hillary Crowns over. The City Council of City of Galt, California, comments your selfless act of rendering life-saving aid to another in time need of February 28, 2024. And this award is going to recognition to Hillary. If you want to say a few words?
Hi. Thank you so much. I mean, this has been above and beyond anything I've ever expected. I did something that I never thought I was ever gonna do, and I'm just glad that it worked out. This worked out so much better than the first time. But you know what? I suggest everybody learn CPR. It's non-contact and stuff like that. I mean, and they help you through. But in a time of need, it's just something I think we should all do for each other, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hillary, I want to say, whereas I wasn't able to come to the gathering at your place of work when you were first honored, but you made a mention a second ago, how you didn't expect this much fanfare for something like that. But I think it's important that we do things like that and make a big deal out of it, because what you did is to be a role model for other people. You know, people may or may not be like, oh, there's a CPR class, you know, Dwight is important. And when they see things like this, they think, you know, that's how important it is. It could be that one moment that you could change someone's life. So for what you did, you're being a role model, so we thank you and we appreciate you and the community.
I can say that right back at you, because I met you years ago with my son, named Mary. And he walked over and he was so impressed to meet you. To this day, he's in leadership. He's in, I mean, to this day because of you. And he just loves the fact that you were here. So I can say, being a role model, I want to thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member want to make any comment? And first presentation or second? If it's not, then I'm going to move to the next gender item. Thank you. Next gender item is D, public comments. Madam Clerk?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First up, we have David Kent, City of Ileton.
Hello, start your engines. So I'm here today to advocate for Galt. Yes, I am a representative of the City of Ileton, your sister city, as is considered by some in the public sector. Perhaps a little diminutive and slightly peculiar, but nonetheless related by the umbilical cord of the freeways, well, the country roads that connect us. Highway 160, Ileton Road, Walnut Grove Road, Twin Cities Road. And the back way into Galt is some of the most stunning scenery in the state, and you should be proud. And why are you not represented at the Sacramento Transportation Authority? You are legal and privileged to be awarded the funds that are dispersed by that board, and you do not have an independent seat. Why are we rivals? I won't put up with it. And I've spoken to Director Bucy about it. And this can be solved by resolution, or if absolutely necessary, it can go to the ballot and be easily amended. Here you are, here's Highway 99. You care about ingress, you care about egress, you care about the traffic created, the traffic flow in your town, which is important for revenue and tax... the traffic flow in your town, which is important for revenue and taxation. Here we are. We have three thousand angry and aggressive commuters going between seventy and ninety miles an hour, passing on a double yellow, converging at a blind corner at the bottom of the hill where there is a pedestrian crosswalk with three city roads converging there. That's insanity. People in our city are taking their lives in their hands when they commute and return home. Oh, but wait. Then there's Highway twelve. Highway twelve has been gifted the status as of the conveyance for large online monopolies considered to be essential, that now passenger vehicles are almost a rarity. There is convoy and after convoy of big rigs carrying general freight, of which one to five percent are Amazon, FedEx, or UPS. And they think Ileton's a truck route. That's how Google presents it in Maps. We're going to petition to get it removed. But there's signs on our city streets that declare that every professional driver that wants to cut through and take their chances on a levee road that's sinking into the Pete, be our guest. And we're gifting those funds to the state. So the whole idea of, you know, what we experience and what you experience deserve independent and vigorous representation. So I'm going to offer you a deal. One part of the deal, you don't have anything to say about because I'm going to do this. I'm doing it now. I'm going to every Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. I'm standing at the front and I'm going to annoy and entertain them until this is fixed, on your behalf. And in the meantime, you want to let me represent Ileton since apparently your internal matters are pressing enough, and I respect that, that you can't be there. That's what I was told by Director Bucy. Let me go. I will speak for Ileton at the front and I'll speak for Galt in the seat. I'll meet with your city manager. I'll meet with the council if you want me to do that. And I will represent you because as you can probably tell, I'm as passionate about your representation as I am ours. Whoever set that up to make rivals out of two competing cities with entirely isolated concerns missed it. That is just completely wrong, and I think we can rectify.
Thank you, Mr. David. Because this is not an agenda item. I can't make that much comment. But I will certainly let you know, there is a representation on STA on the board from last two, three year. And I think there is a director there. He can might be explained to you. Every meeting, and you know, there is some kind of internal between us and Ileton, but it's going to solve very soon because they can have to, somebody have to represent. It's called or I'll turn. So it's going to solve very quick, but previously I attend STA meeting. And I will talk to you one-on-one when you get a chance. You get my phone number, I will explain to you. There is a represent and there's advocacy, but there's a system. Due to the population, we get our share and fair. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for our city manager to also touch base with Mr. Kent to see? Okay, if you could please give him your contact information so we can get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Ava Walton.
Hello. Thank you for your time. I'm also a City Council member from the City of Ileton. And I'm just reiterating what Mr. Kent said. And Galt and Ileton are one of the oldest cities in Sacramento County. And it's my belief that we both deserve a seat at the table. There's funds given to us as well as you. And I don't think the rotation thing makes any sense. I think we should always be represented on that board. And that's what I'm here to say and support what Mr. Kent said. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that's the separate seat as a guard we try. But it's also depend upon, there is a sixteen director. You guys know that they make a decision. We are very, I'm one director out of sixteen. And Mr. Wusi, I think I'm happy if we have our own seat and you guys have our answer. Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I want to take this to the highest possible authority until it's rectified.
Thank you, sir. We will talk. Thank you.
Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ken Lee. I live at Galt Place. I'm currently seventy years old. I wanted to know, is there a strategy to curb the increasing crime at the stores? There's many walkouts with goods, credit card skimming going on. And basically, I was involved in small business since the seventies. And shoplifting happened then, but it was curbed because they were writing citations then and fining the people. And they had a record of that. In San Francisco, way back at the start of two thousand, I had to tag my goods in my store so I can identify it when people didn't pay for it. I had gated points of no return. That means when you passed the register and out through the gate before you got out the front door, that's the point of no return. And it shows your intention of not wanting to pay for the merchandise. Basically, I had dedicated door cameras, door beepers, automatic door locks. As years went by, I had to start taking deposit on people before I let them into the store. And that worked great. Shoplifting stopped. Nine out of ten people did not have money. So what was only, it proved the only intention they were there for was the shoplift, most likely. And in San Francisco, in cooperation with the Police Department and the District Attorney's Office, we developed a citizen community court. That was to hear misdemeanors. And it was a member, it was a three-member panel with policemen present to explain the citation. From there, we would determine the consequences of the perpetrator. One, either give them community service. Two, ban them from the businesses that they shoplifted from. Three, educate them. Because some people were stealing for the babies. And we taught them how to get EBT, WIC, and everything else. Because that's understandable. You know, your kid comes first. So a lot of people did not know how to get by and make ends meet. And then we taught people how to get free meals and where food was available. But there was no such thing as a free ride. It wasn't take what you want atmosphere. Okay? And basically, it's my thibby, talking with the longtime unhoused people of Galt. They're telling me that a new group of people have been taking over running rough shots at their camp during the crime in the city. Basically, we believe they are just recently released criminals from the jails. So they went back to their own, the old ways. Basically, they're breaking into cars, burglarizing the businesses. They're challenging us seniors. Our building has a hundred seniors in there. And now they're challenging us to physical fights, property damage. And this has happened during the Twicker hours of two AM and four thirty AM. And they don't want to conform to society. It's that take what you want and assault anybody you want and run rough shots over everybody. They're threatening to firebomb our vehicles. Okay? And basically, if they're on parole, I don't think they should be hanging together, living at people's residences together either. So somebody needs to check on that. Because they're hanging out in packs of threes at night, high-powered flashlights, buck knives, dealing drugs, carrying weapons, as a four-foot crowbar. So basically, we're thinking about, like Elk wrote, to develop a citizens drone surveillance patrol to protect our block of the apartments. This way, we can identify them, observe, and then pass it on to the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Lee.
Gail Weber.
Good evening, Council. I'm here today representing the Beautification Committee. And in honor of Earth Day, this Saturday, we are doing a citywide cleanup. And our group is meeting at Cafe Latte at nine AM in the parking lot. We're encouraging anybody to join us. But if you can't join us, we are encouraging you to step outside your door and spend a half hour to an hour and pick up trash in your neighborhood. Pick up a few pieces of paper, whatever you can see. We're encouraging people to post pictures on Facebook, to submit them to the city. We'd like to see the groups, your church group, your social group, your pickleball group, whatever, come and show us what, you know, the group that you have that's picking up trash. And then to maybe send pictures into the most unusual thing you've picked up. So this Saturday, in honor of Earth Day, we're doing a citywide cleanup, nine AM at Cafe Latte. Please join us there or, like I said, step outside your front door and spend a half hour or so and pick up some trash. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail Weber. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. The next agenda item is reports by City Council members or regional board, commission and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I attended the SECOG Land Use and Natural Resources Committee meeting. Talked about a couple of things. I'll highlight one, the two thousand twenty-five blueprint discussion. As you remember, this is the plan moving forward to twenty fifty. And it addresses transportation as well as housing related to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, which is nineteen percent for our region. And that is a state target. It's a state mandate. I want to note that the state, this is above and beyond what the state is taking credit for. Meaning, one item that they are taking credit for is the amount of electrified vehicles on the roadway. So we can't use the fact that we are, that electric vehicles are more popular these days. And so we can't consider that as part of our greenhouse gas emission. That's one of many. So during the meeting, right now, SECOG, we're going through the land, the land use piece of this. Transportation will come later this summer. We've had a couple of people contact me and then certainly the rest of the committee and boards about how to distribute housing units for the plan in order to get to the nineteen percent reduction. One of those plans, as proposed, is very interesting, is SECOG normally looks at all of the development and considers whatever amount of units that are going to be in the plan to be all partially developed. One idea from someone was that we consider looking at fully developed, so fewer developments, but at full capacity. And so I've asked the SECOG staff to review some language that was submitted and to see whether or not that would fit into what we're doing. And then the board can make the decision. Our next board meeting is this Thursday at nine thirty at the SECOG office. And so this will be on the agenda to talk about. And then, secondly, I'm going to be attending the Cal Cities Legislative Days tomorrow through Friday here in Sacramento and plan on reporting back on that on our next meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papino.
Much more fun than our usual meetings. The Cable Television Commission, as a board member there, I also sit on the board of the Sacramento Educational Cable Consortium. And it's student educational video award season. So once again, this year, I was able, invited to record the introductions for the students in all the groups K through twelve for their defining moment, videos that were selected. And then they'll now move on to the final educational video award contest. So this year, we were at McCaffrey. And I got to spend a few hours in front of the camera with Karen Albert and Zoom with all these kids to do the introductions of their videos. So as I say, much more fun than our usual meetings. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I had since the last council meeting was just the meeting with our Quality of Life ad hoc, which the mayor and I both participate in. We just meet and discuss ways to mitigate problems that affect quality of life in Galt. And I think they're productive meetings. And so we just continue to keep doing those. And other than that, I don't have anything else officially that I've done between now and since the last. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Myself, nothing to report except quality of life for myself and Councilmember Farmer. We attend. And we have a lot of discussion, but we certainly will discuss openly in a future meeting. Thank you. Next agenda item E, no, next agenda item F. Information consent calendar. It is recommended that item one through seven be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from consent calendar?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item F four.
All right. Thank you. Item number one, receive and file warrant for period ending April third, twenty twenty-four. Item two, minutes of regular meeting of April second, twenty twenty-four. Item three, lease amendment for with A and T pallet for industrial space, one three zero five zero and one three zero seven zero West Stockton Boulevard and one zero three four one Walnut Avenue in the City of Galt. Number five, adoption of resolution, intention to annex territory into the Community Facility District number twenty twenty-one for Greenwood Cottage. Number six, military equipment use annual report, renewal of ordinance, number twenty twenty-two zero two regarding military equipment. Number seven, task order number two, with Carol Engineer for the simmer on commercial development utility study and associate preparation. Any public comment on these items? If there is no public comment, I was looking to have a motion, item one through seven, accept item number four.
So moved.
Is motion moved by Councilmember Farmer? Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero. Thank you. Now we're going to discuss item number four. Amendment number to task order number four, R A Y Engineer Incorporation for Improvement Plan Review Service for simmer floor development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item tonight. I don't necessarily have any questions for staff. The staff report is very clear. This is a pretty regular thing for a task order regarding a project that was developed or approved. I just simply asked that this item be pulled tonight because this project, when originally approved on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, was a project that I voted against. It was a project that required not only an annexation of farmland, crossing the threshold that we currently have as the city limits, but also annex zoning change. And I just was against the project. It just wasn't a good fit, in my opinion. Came back to council not long ago. And with some significant changes, which even made it further, in my opinion, project is just not a good fit for Galt. This project, to me, just epitomizes urban sprawl and it's an abomination, in my opinion. And I vowed to never support or vote on anything whatsoever to spend a nickel on this project. And so tonight, I'm just asking it be pulled so that I can just keep representing that no vote on the project. I don't expect the council to not approve it. This project will go forward and it will become, and maybe I'll be proven wrong someday. But just want to make that statement and. but just want to make that statement. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Farmer. Any other councilmember, any comment on this agenda item?
Moved to approve.
Any public comment on this agenda item F four? If it's not, then I was looking to motion to prove item number F four. And Vice, Vice Mayor Lozano, moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by the mayor. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Far, excuse me, Farmer.
No.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by three, two, one, three, two, one. Thank you. And next agenda item G, schedule matter notice of public hearing.
End of this evening.
Thank you. Regular calendar, city council's office. Subject Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission alternate board member appointment. Miss Hubert.
So the recommendation is to appoint by motion an alternate board member to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. In two thousand and twenty-two, Galt obtained its own seat on the commission. And on August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, city council appointed Kevin Papino as a representative without appointing an alternate member. There is no term ending date for this appointment. However, the appointments are reviewed annually by city council in December. And the commission meets quarterly in March, June, September, and December at two thirty PM in the County of Sacramento's Board Chambers in Sacramento.
All right, any councilmember voluntary be?
And to, to clarify what's going on a little bit, there's four, four meetings a year. However, at the last meeting, there was a, a motion and it was approved to add a fifth meeting. And that calendar hasn't quite been worked out yet. And then we have a, one meeting scheduled on the twenty-first of June, which brought this to my attention because I will be out of state. And the, I mean, quite frankly, it's, you know, of all the boards and commissions, my favorite one. It's a pretty, pretty good business. They always run their budget in the black and it's got no unfunded liabilities with pensions and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's good stuff. But it is at two thirty downtown and attendance is always in person. There's no remote option. So, all that being said, leave it to the three of you.
All right, any public comment on this? If it's not, any councilmember voluntary want to be alternate?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, unfortunately, for that, something like that at two thirty during the week and not having a Zoom option, which I very much utilize for my other seat with the library, with my business and our staffing right now, I'm pretty much working six days a week there. It's difficult for me to get away. It would be, I know it's an alternate. I would have to give it some thought to see. I mean, I know it may not be the kind of case where I may, I may not ever have to be there if I'm just an alternate. So, but you're definitely going to be gone on the twenty-first June meeting, huh? Okay, I would need to check my calendar to see if I can make that one because obviously I'd be need, I would need to make at least that one. So I, I can't commit without checking my calendar first on that. So that's where I would leave it. So I'm possibly interested, but I have to get, I have to get back to Tina on that.
All right. If there is no councilmember have a time or is not available, then I'm going to be voluntary to attend that one meeting, at least be alternate when she comes.
And, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, that should be the only one that's necessary barring any special meetings. And then in December, we'll, you will reorganize. So.
Well, just, just to streamline things along, if you can make the twenty-first meeting, Paul, I, I would be fine with being the alternate. I know it sounds kind of, but I, just unless, just so this doesn't have to come back. Or?
No, I believe it's okay.
You just want to be the alternate? Okay.
I, I will cover it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
So we're appointing the mayor?
Yes, and we need to take a board?
Yes.
All right, may I motion to approve that item number one, Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Mission Alternate Board Member point? We have a motion.
So moved.
It's moved by councilmember Farmer. Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero. Next agenda item is city attorney's office. Subject verification of action taken on February twenty twenty twenty-four to the resolution twenty twenty-four thirteen. Report by supplantor your.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item is essentially a redo of the action that the council took on February twentieth. This does not do or create anything new. Under CalPERS rules that there are, there's a sort of a moratorium when you can enlist a retired annuitant to help out with, do work for another CalPERS agency and it's a hundred and eighty days after the effective retirement. There are ability to exempt out of that requirement pursuant to the CalPERS statutes and rules. If certain conditions are satisfied and if taken a counsel for approval, we did that in, on February for the interim HR director. And there were also at the time in place executive orders related to the flooding, flooding from the last winter and the rains that allowed some flexibility for those rules. CalPERS, though, is insisting that that resolution have been approved, be approved in open session rather than the consent calendar. So that's why this is, that's literally the only change between this time and that time. This time, it's on open session for approval. And this ensures that the retired annuitant here doesn't have to repay the pension allowance that she received. So obviously, it's important to just make sure we get it right. And there's only one change to the resolution I want to make. There's an effective date of when the hundred and eighty day period would expire. I think right now it says, it says May first, twenty twenty-four. We're going to change that to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four because of counting and a hundred and eighty days. So we just want to clarify that. But other than that, it's, it's the same as what you proved before. We're looking for a motion to ratify the action taken, to adopt a resolution ratifying the action taken on February twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any public comments on this agenda item? There is no public comment. Is looking for a motion?
Moved to approve.
It moved by councilmember Papino.
Second.
Second by councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer. Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero. Our next agenda item is Human Resources Department. Subject, consider approval of exceptional to the hundred and eighty waiting period to hire a CalPERS retired annuitant. This Human Resource, who, Human Resource Director Cortez.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. A similar item that the city attorney had, I have before you tonight, to consider a police sergeant who's retiring in May. And due to staffing levels, we'd like to do an exception to the one eighty day rule that CalPERS has in place. One of the hindrances with that is that post does require if a police officer has voluntarily separated more than a hundred and eighty days, they have to go back through a background process. So this would eliminate that need. And I know the department could use him without having to wait that one hundred and eighty days. If you have any questions for me?
Any councilmember, any question on that? If, if it's not, any public comment?
No public comment.
There's no public comment. And I'm looking to, a motion to adopt a resolution approving an exception to the hundred and eighty days waiting period for hiring a retired annuitant as an extra help under Government Code Section twenty-one, two, two, four, and seven, five, two, two, one, point, five, six. I'm looking for a motion to approve that. It's moved by Vice Mayor Lozano. Second by councilmember Papino. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer. Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion approved by four to zero. Thank you. Our next agenda item is Parks and Recreation Department. Subject, city of Galt Special Sponsorship Application Review Physical Year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty five. Director Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am your stand-in Special Events Manager, Ramon Solis, Parks and Rec Director. So at the last council meeting, city council received a presentation regarding what applications have come forward to you to be considered. Today, we're asking you to consider making the approvals and the amounts of which you want to approve. So to go over our sponsorship policy and goals and objectives, you see them before, you're the same as they were two weeks ago. To promote the city of Galt as, as, sorry, wrong glasses. It's a desirable place to live, visit and do business, promote the city of Galt as a visitor destination and bring tourism to associated revenue to the city, enhance the qual, quality of life and well-being, advance the city's commitment and pride of being a multicultural community, encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride, promote cultural and artistic awareness among this citizenry, aligns with the city of Galt's mission statement and/or strategic plan, sponsorship requests not to exceed five thousand dollars per event unless the city council approves a higher amount when it has set the entire budget for the special event sponsorship program. Soft costs examples are rental facilities, fees, and any staff cost during regular scheduled. Hard cost examples are janitorial services, any staff outside of work schedule. Sorry, I did not face you when I made that, made those comments. Before you, you have the requests that were asked of the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The teen center and amount of two thousand dollars. Liberty Ranch Schoolhouse renovations, five thousand. Ray House ceiling renovations, five thousand. Galt FFA Farm to Fork is eleven hundred and sixty-three. Every fifteen minutes is four hundred and thirty-six. The Galt alumni dinner is five forty and Liberty Ranch Homecoming Parade is nine fifty-four. Old Town Dinner and Dance, five thousand. Fall Harvest Festival, five thousand. Wine, Beer and Food, five forty. La Heim Trick or Treat, four thousand, five hundred and twenty. I need to make sure that you guys have received that email from the Galt Chamber moving their fall festival date to, to be determined versus the, the date they had requested. Wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that. So the recommendation is review the special event sponsorship programs request for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and provide direction on the approval of events, monetary amounts and/or in-kind contributions. I'm here, Jackie's here to answer any questions you have. And I see some people in the audience from these organizations. If you'd like to call them up.
Thank you. Any councilmember have any comment, any discussion regarding this issue?
I'd like to say that, like I said last time, it looks like a, all these events look really great and a lot of fun. I appreciate, you know, all these organizations coming forward and putting, you know, the efforts forward to, to do these things to make our community better. They're all good events or projects. And I don't see any issue. I support everything I'm seeing.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment that I think that to, to be determined date on the Fall Harvest Festival is appropriate and would support that.
And again, that date would be with approval of the city. It, we needed to make sure that we have enough police coverage for that and make sure our facilities aren't competing with that event also.
Thank you. And I also will support all the events because they are very important for the city because these represent, they work hard and they don't make no money. They don't work as a salary. So I would like ask as a voluntary, I know there is a lot of represent, they are sitting down in the audience, anybody want to explain their event? As a voluntary, if somebody come from the chamber or Gail, if somebody want to come, if he's not, then I'm going to move to the next agenda. And also, there is any public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment? Then, Mr. Lee, you have enough, I don't think that we need to vote on that, right? Do you have enough traction from the council?
Providing direction that we approve all the events listed above in the amounts that requested.
Yes, that's why every councilmember this.
And they will be included in this year's budget that will be presented by Matt Boring. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item is communication. Madam Clerk, any communication?
End of this evening.
All right, city clerks report.
I had nothing.
And next agenda item with city manager or his staff, anything they want to talk?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Arias, interim city manager. We have a few departments with some comments. And we'll start with Economic Development Director Amy
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I briefly wanted to update on a couple of items. One, I know at the last council meeting, Councilman Vandenberg, I believe, had requested an update on the signage project for outside of city hall. And I shared with the city manager and with the other directors during our follow-up department head meeting last week that we recently completed an eight-eleven survey out there to determine where the utilities are out in front of city hall. And unfortunately, it appears that there's a very small area that we can place a sign. And so we are still doing our due diligence to determine if there is a feasible area for a large enough sign, potentially looking at some type of reader board, electronic signage, so that we can advertise both city events and then nonprofit events out there. So to be continued, we are still working with Galt Sign on that. Also, just wanted to update briefly on Rite Aid. We found out recently that the building is now up for lease. They've signed a contract with the leasing agent. CBRE out of Sacramento is going to be advertising that property. They've had several interested tenants looking at it already. And so I don't think it'll be long before they get that property leased out. So I'll report out once we have a confirmed tenant for that area. And we also did hear that AT&amp;T is going to be relocating within the center. And so the AT&amp;T space will be up for lease here soon. We are hoping to find a quality tenant in that location considering the visibility from Twin Cities and it's a pretty sizable space. So we'll continue to do some outreach on that piece of property as well. And then lastly, just an update on the community engagement front. Genesis in our office has been doing quite a bit on trying to increase our following for our newsletters. The city newsletter, as many of you know, includes a plethora of information on things that are happening in the city. And so we're really trying to boost the subscriptions on that. We were out at the Saturday market in April with our little Wheel of Fortune, collecting email addresses. We, that was really successful. We did get lots of email addresses through that. We also have an insert in the utility bill that just recently went out with the QR code and an email address or a website requesting folks to sign up. So if you talk to folks in the community, please encourage them. There is a ton of information out there, especially people who don't follow on. There is a ton of information out there, especially people who don't follow on social media. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Next, we would have Public Works Director, Mr. Solly.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, just a quick update if those who may not have seen or maybe hopefully haven't heard the train horns. I want to give credit to our city engineer for petitioning the Federal Railroad Administration despite their, you know, additional hoop they threw at us that I reported on last time. We were getting our traffic counts and submitting them to them, but we had asked if they would, you know, reinstate the quiet zone, you know, irregardless of getting that data in. And so they were agreeable to that, and Friday, we got some acknowledgement of that, and I think it's gone out probably on social media. And, but anyway, just wanted to take the opportunity to pass that on, and I know I didn't hear any trains at all today in the office, so, and believe me, I hear, when I hear it, I'm not happy about it. So, so hopefully, everybody else is, or recognize that that's back to normal. So I do want to note, though, that, you know, just so everybody understands, you know, the engineer, train operator always has the option to blow the horn if there's people or vehicles that are on or near the tracks, so they can do that regardless of the quiet zone. And UP's had a lot of maintenance activity and vehicles and whatnot if folks have seen them over there on the west side of the tracks in town. And so I think that's been cause for some of the, you know, just one-off horn blowings that we've, we've heard on occasion over the last several days. So, so anyway, but hopefully, everything's pretty much going to quiet down again, so thank you.
Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A couple of things I'd like to bring you up to date on. Jackie apologizes she had to deal with the issue at the market, that's what delayed her, so she wanted me to pass on her apologies. Wanted to say thank you to our staff of the Saturday Market. It was a pretty successful market. It was very busy. It was probably the busiest one that we've had in regards to vendors, so I hope they keep up the job, the good job. I wanted to update you on the Park Master Plan. We had our site visit on Thursday and Friday of last week, so they, they were out here taking notes, walking our trails, looking at our parks and our buildings. And then I have some great news. We actually have hired somebody who has a QAC license. We are starting to get the paperwork filed, and we should start spraying hopefully next week. So hopefully, those weeds will start going away.
And finally, Police Chief Brian Kalanowski.
Thank you, and it's hard to follow that last piece of information because that's, we've all been waiting for that. However, I just wanted to follow up, and I wanted to thank council, and obviously, if Councilmember Vandenberg was here, he would, had been equally supportive of the council's proclamation to the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial. There's a lot of heavy lifting that goes on with that group to pull the events off and to remember these 44 officers and who've lost their life in line of duty. For the public that's interested, on May 2nd at noon at 500 Ardenn Way in Sacramento is the location of the Sacramento Police and Sheriff's Memorial, and so we will be having our annual remembrance and reading the names of those who we've lost in the line of duty. Thankfully, however, there are no new names added from 2023, so there is a silver lining in all of that. And the second thing is, a comment was made earlier about what are people doing about business things and, and other criminal activity that folks are frustrated with. I would direct people to the Californians for Safer Communities website. That is the initiative pushed forward by the District Attorneys Association and others, big business retailers, in order to sort of reinvent the Prop 47 chaos that occurred and has caused a lot of problems in our communities directly related to quality of life that the mayor and Councilmember Farmer talked about earlier. And so I'm not going to, and can't advocate politically certain positions, but folks can certainly educate themselves on that initiative and the importance of being present in November for that vote. And so with that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So next agenda item, let me see. Our next agenda item is comment by city council member and future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Parks and Recreation. I happened to be out at Walker Park on Saturday for a soccer, wasn't a tournament, but there were a lot of soccer games going on, and I had a family member who lives out of town playing there. And from their sidelines, we got a lot of compliments about how, how nice the field was, looked, and how well the grounds around there were kept up. And as you may all remember, Saturday was pouring rain, and the actual, the restrooms there were in very good shape. So thank you to Parks and Rec and all you do to, to maintain that. So the last couple of weeks been a little busy. I attended on the 4th at the fire station opening for Fire Station 77, which is up in South Elk Grove. And now with those, the new ambulance and engine in the system, it'll help provide service down here specifically on the west side of the railroad tracks to Galt when, when that's needed. And so I think the system's bolstered by that, and I think we can look forward to some good, or better response times based on that. Went to the shred event, and I want to say that our staff did an awesome job. Actually had stuff to have, to shred, and I was in and out within like five minutes. I think the longest time it took, longest item took was checking my ID to make sure I lived here. And so it was very good. On Saturday, the 6th, also, the mayor and I attended the A to Z Foundation Gala down on Woodbridge Road, and that was a great fundraiser for veterans and children with special needs in, in the community. The, the A to Z Foundation is Galt, Lodi, and Stockton Chapter, and so lots of money was raised, and they sold, they, they raffled off many, many, many firearms. It was fun. Excuse me, I'm glitching here a little bit. Want to point out that the 27th of April, the Galt Sunrise Rotary is having Taco de Mayo event. It's been, I guess, on social media a little bit, and so if you need tickets, you can contact me or go to the Galt Sunrise Rotary website. The tickets are $15, pretty cheap for three tacos and beans and rice, chips and salsa, and it's all being cooked by Pedro Ramos. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papano.
So Saturday morning, my wife and I were leaving to go to the market, and I came out in my cul-de-sac, and there's somebody on a bike that we'll just say didn't really belong there. And I kind of was eyeballing him, see what was going on, and noticed that somebody was following him in a SUV, and kind of didn't know if they were together or what, and then slowly realized that they were, had been in a little confrontation of sorts. So we tailed along, and I yelled at them, and they told me they were already on the phone with the police, so we just tailed along for a little bit for this slow-speed pursuit. And then once the first officer got there, I was able to help him detain this guy. And turned out, these people that were following him, their son had been at the park and was accosted by a couple of people, this guy being one of them. And this whole thing probably lasted, I don't know, three, four minutes, but by the time he was detained, I turned around, and there's three more officers there, and the other guy was detained. So yes, we need to try and make crime illegal again in California so people can stay in jail where they belong. However, it's good to be in our town and, you know, have a citizen have this happen, get on the phone, and within a couple of minutes, there's, you know, four cops there taking care of business. I was told later that the guy was like a .27, so. Anyway, that's my story. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you. Well, I don't have anything that interesting. That was the entertainment for tonight, folks. Thank you for coming. I just want to echo what Councilman Lozano said about the park at Walker. I actually drove by there on sergeant, I went by the park, and I noticed it looked beautiful. And actually, I noticed that all the parks look really beautiful. I was telling the city manager today at meeting that I think you, the Parks guys are doing a really good job with keeping all the grass mowed. It's, I know it's growing really fast, so I just want to give you guys thanks for that and pass that along. Want to thank all the crew of Public Works crews and, and all the staff that were out at the Saturday Market with the trucks and things that they, they brought out, and of course, to the market staff who ran a successful Saturday Market. It was very well attended, it was a busy day, the weather was great, and hopefully, we'll have good weather for the rest of the year moving forward. But thank you again for a kickoff, great, finally getting the, the event kicked off for the year, and it was good. The train horn, good news, I guess, to some people. I saw a train go by today at my shop. I see them go by all the time, and I looked, and my wife says, it's not, the horn's not going off. And I was like, you're not. And I'll be honest with you, my first thing was like watching a NASCAR race, and here comes the cars, and then you just, and there's no sound. And it was kind of very uneventful. I don't know how to feel about it. I kind of miss the horns, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to lie, so. But I'm sure that most people are happy that, that that's been resolved. So thank you to staff for, for reaching out and petitioning them for that. Mike, thank you. Great news on the weed spraying, best news of the night by far, 100%. Everybody in the room who knows, knows that probably makes me very happy. And lastly, so the Galt Youth Commission is having a senior tech day at 11 o'clock on the 25th of this month. The Galt Youth Commissioners are planning to assist any seniors who would like to bring tech devices in, computers, smartphones, whatever, and get assistance with those things. The location has not been nailed down exactly, but I would say any seniors who are listening or would like to attend, or you know someone who, who would like to attend, we'll try to have the city post something on social media before the 25th, and the, and, and I'll try to post something on my page, too, announcing the location. We just haven't locked it down yet, but it will be here in town on the 25th at 11. And then last, just that, for those of you who don't know, the C Street Project's starting. Thank you to city staff for putting out stuff on the internet and, and, you know, making the webpage available. For those of you who don't know, it's cstreetproject.org. There's a whole webpage, there's maps. That will be updated regularly. There's also a phone number on there you can call if you have questions, but cstreetproject.org. Hopefully, it'll go smoothly, and, but I imagine things are going to be ramping up. It's already starting to see things go on, so. And I think that's it, Mr. Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer. Myself, thank you for the staff. They're working hard. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the clear report. Thank you for city manager. I also like to thank you for the public comment. Anybody make the public comment is very important for me. I believe it's very important for the council member. We need to know what the public wants. I also like to thank you, the media. I also like to thank you represent from the nonprofit organization they are here. Thank you for the chamber. They are here. There are a few events I attended. I attended Saturday Market, well organized, a lot of people, and good weather. I also attended AG Foundation Veterans with Vice Mayor. We enjoyed it. Did a lot of things on, on that dinner that night. And the last thing, I, I was asked to speak with the senior citizen at Emerald Village. You know, the Emerald Village is backside of Walmart. They asked me to as a special guest to speak on behalf of the city council. I went over there. They're well organized, there is around 50 to 60 citizens. And they want to ask me what you are next, what the city doing, how the city work. I gave them all the information, the best knowledge I have. And they have some question, and they have some complaints, but I certainly will discuss with the city manager what else we can do. I think that's all. If any council member have any question?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you to the Ileton council members for coming tonight. Sorry, I had it written down, but thank you for making the trek over and bringing concerns to our attention. Thank you.
If any council member any, have any question? If he's not, then I'm going to adjourn that meeting 7:19. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.